Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning everyone and welcome to the November 15th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day is Proverbs 27 verse 18, "As workers who tend to fig tree are allowed to eat the fruit, so workers who protect their employer's interests will be rewarded." And I have a dog this morning. Okay, yeah, yeah. Come on, little girl. Or little boy. We thought she was a girl, but it turns out it's a male. He's about five months old. He is a husky mix, you could tell by the beautiful blue eyes that he has. He's available on Saturday and we are doing better. We are down to about 20 dogs. So if you are interested in getting a dog for your family, come down to Lorraine County Dog Kennel, or you could also check us out on Facebook. We have them all on there too, so thank you. Brother or sister, so if you want two of them. Madam Clerk?
I guess we're gonna do the presentations first?
Yes, please.
Mr. Romanci, Downtown Revitalization.
Are you ready, Dime?
Good morning and thank you. Today, we'll be talking about a new program that we've been working on for a little bit of time now to reinvest in our smaller local downtowns. The name of the program is Downtown Revitalization Loan Fund. Oh, boy. This is actually mirrored on the program we've been working out with the City of Amherst and the state program. We have found that our smaller communities just cannot put together an application that's gonna be competitive enough, and with the state continuing to reduce their funding for these type of programs, in the last round, there were only two Downtown Revitalization Programs actually awarded throughout the state of Ohio. So what we're hoping to be able to do is to continue to encourage that type of investment we're seeing in Downtown Amherst right now with this program, in our other smaller villages. Downtowns are very vital to our local communities, they are a big part of our fabric, they attract people to be able to have a place to gather. These, the target areas that we're looking at are Grafton, LaGrange, South Amherst, and Wellington. So in this case, where Wellington has had a hard time competing to be able to submit an application with Wellington and Oberlin, they now will have access to funds themselves so that they'll be, they and their businesses as well, the other communities, will be able to get assistance to keep their communities moving. So, again, it's, you know, pictures like this that are very picturesque, it also feeds into creating a good positive scene for our Visitors Bureau, being able to support those local businesses. Oftentimes, we have our restaurants and our bars and antique shops and things that can bring people in. So, same type of uses for the funds, so we're looking to be able to improve the quality of the building, code improvements, interior renovations, roofs, and also, one of the things we're looking at doing is, in special occasions, actually assist the property owner in doing a design, so that we'd have either an engineer or an architect as necessary, so that would be an eligible use where we've expanded to make sure these projects are done correctly. And really, that is about it. I'd already talked about some of the benefits that would be occurring, but it's to help our property values, encourage local businesses, and ultimately create jobs in our local downtowns.
Well, the information tied into it, I mean, is similar to $300,000. What's the total outlay of dollars we've got to invest in this program?
We have originally set up $200,000 and as a revolving loan fund. As the funds are lent out, they'll come back.
Commissioner, the, we had about 200, a little bit over $200,000 left in an expired micro enterprise loan fund that we had some time ago that we went defunct. So we rolled those monies into this program. We actually haven't been using those funds for quite a long time, they've just been sitting undisturbed. The program should generate in excess of, well, at least $400,000. We're hoping over half a million dollars of investment into the downtown areas. There is a requirement initially for at least a one-to-one match in the program. We're hoping for better than the one-to-one match, and of course, that'll give us the easy math, that should give us at least 20 loans. I met with the Main Street folks last week, it was a good meeting, although some of the Main Streets are not eligible for this program. They were very enthusiastic, some of the smaller Main Streets were there. One of the concerns was that initially those are only $10,000 loans, could they be larger? But I really wanna see the program first, see how it, unroll first, and see how it does. If we go too big, too fast, I think we'll exhaust the funds and not access enough folks early on. If there's not enough interest, then we can talk about possibly a second round of loans, or increasing the amount of funds available that are available. If we're wildly successful, maybe we can get a different allocation of cash into the loan fund. Remember, it's based upon the revolving, CDBG revolving loan fund concept, so the money should regenerate back into that fund for future use. I think we kept the loans, was it 10 years on the loans?
We could go out as far as 10, but realistically, we were looking somewhere between 5 and 7 on a typical.
On a typical bankable type.
Correct.
This is different, though, to interrupt you. With Amherst, we administered, basically, the director, the Main Street did all the outreach. How are we doing the outreach? Like, Kipton doesn't have a Main Street or...
Who doesn't?
Kipton doesn't have a Main Street, South Amherst doesn't have a Main Street, Wellington does.
Well, I don't actually see a lot of this doing anything for Kipton.
Okay, but it's included in.
They are included in. I see the best penetration coming in, LaGrange, Grafton, Wellington, and those areas that don't necessarily have a large Main Street program. There's not a large Main Street program in either Grafton or LaGrange, but there are people that do economic development, we're reaching out to them in those areas. One of the villages that's not involved is Sheffield Village, I'd like to address that before, you know, the czar of the heart of it all comes in and starts giving me a hard time. Mayor Hunter will probably hear this and get distressed that they're not included in this program, but there really isn't not a core area to Sheffield Village. They're doing a great job there, the mayor does a wonderful job, I'm very appreciative of all the support he gives us and the work we do together, but their issues are a little bit different. We work at a different level with the village. The village is not structured towards a Main Street-type approach, similar to Avon and Avon Lake. There really is not a downtown core area that we could work in with any of those communities. This is more, the smaller areas that do have an older downtown that they could do some work in. So we definitely tried to target that type of community with this, where we wanna preserve some of that natural history and some of those buildings and get investors interested in relooking at those areas. I don't know how successful it's gonna be, but there was a definite need in Wellington, and we just expanded it to take a look at some of the potential in the other communities. I just don't see Kipton as a viable area right now, but maybe, who knows? And if we do see the Quarries Project that we've been working, again, with the developers on, we see some activity there, South Amherst could become, you know, a really, a really good place to invest, and they may wanna do something there too.
Is it gonna be match money required like Amherst?
There will be match money, it's a one-to-one. Initially, we're hoping, as I said earlier, to do a little bit better than that, have a little bit more skin in the game from the investors. And I really wanna keep the interest rates very, very low on the loans so that we get activity in this. We need to get a little bit of return on the money, but this is an incentive program to get people to try to reinvest in the community, get a little stimulation in the downtown. I don't expect this to be an overwhelming economic development incentive, it's more to generate interest in those smaller downtown areas that need somebody to come in and look at some depleted buildings and so forth. It's not enough money here to extend this into a Leary or a Lorraine. $200,000 is a drop in a bucket in the bigger communities like that. We need to be looking at the big grant money to work within those communities, and they already have people helping them, they have their own departments in those communities, and we try to assist those folks. So I don't want them to feel left out either, but this is, we don't have the money to do that, this, we need to target our resources so that they're better utilized.
Great program.
Yeah, I just think it's another example of the county commissioners working in partnership with communities and doing all that we can to help stimulate some economic development and some revitalization and some growth, and that's something that I will say over and over again, I've been so happy about with this board since I came on board. This board is committed to working in partnership with communities to help them succeed and grow, and this is another example of that. You know, as I had pointed out with a similar program before, I just wanna make sure it's not always first come, first served, that we actually reach out to everybody and give them a chance to participate before we go back and award maybe a second amount of money to the same individual, so that everybody gets a chance to participate in the program.
In this case, it's gonna be much easier as well as with the lending of the money. We'll be getting the projects internally and reviewing them. Also, we already have brochures printed that we'll be distributing to the local communities, and we'll be doing a pretty good campaign, even looking at maybe doing a couple of small advertisements in the, like, the Urban Rural and a couple of the other local papers. So, we've really thought about how we wanted to roll this out, and this is just the very first step, is getting the program established, so thank you.
Is it gonna be capped at, like, $10,000?
$10,000, so that allows for 20, up to about 20 loans.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a press release for this?
Yes.
So you're gonna make it available?
Yes.
I see our young reporter here taking notes quite a bit, so make sure he gets a copy of it, please.
And the old reporter.
Well, he isn't so old.
Former sports guy.
Madam Clerk, can go on to the second presentation?
Lorraine County Transit redevelopment plan.
Okay. I wanted to go through this presentation, I don't know, Jim, if you wanted to add anything before, or...
No, I think, might as well just run with it, and then we can plug in after you're done. There was a lot of information, hopefully you've condensed it down so that we can get to it rather quickly.
Yes, well, a little bit, there's 71 slides, I supposedly have 10 minutes, so that's seven slides per minute, so.
That's very concise.
We'll try to, we'll try to get to it quickly, but first of all, you know, we wanna talk about the project goals, we wanna do an analysis of the transit market and the services that are, that we're providing, and then talk about some preliminary recommendations that we have covering a number of areas, and then finally, talk about the next steps and where we go from here on this. So our project objective, we want to...
Can I interrupt you real quick before you start? Let's explain what this grant, when it came from, this is a...
Yes, this is a TLC...
Introduce yourself also.
I'm Tim Rosenberg, I'm with WSP, we're consultants that work with transit agencies around the country, and based in Cleveland, our group is based in Cleveland. And the grant is a TLCI, Transportation for Livable Communities Initiative grant from Nuaca, for $100,000, that is covering this and, you know, is basically a comprehensive analysis of the transit system and putting together recommendations for how we can make improvements in the short term and in the longer term. So, just getting into the project objective, we wanna develop a business case for the transit system to meet the needs of the community, maximize efficiency and aid in economic and social success, and Lorraine County and transit can contribute to all those things. We wanna develop an efficient and effective system that meets the community's needs, provide greater access to transit for Lorraine County residents, identify transit service links to underserved communities and areas and destinations, and provide transit service that enhances the livability of Lorraine County and the region. We did a pretty extensive analysis, we did a demographic analysis, looking at the various transit markets, we did a summary of the existing transit service, existing transit ridership, and we actually went out and did an onboard passenger count to find out where people were getting on and off, and how many people were using the service, and get a look at the system firsthand. We also did a pretty extensive analysis of inter-county transit demand, looking at possible commuter services into Cleveland and Kioga County. We actually went out and did a count of the number of people using, number of people with Lorraine County plates using the RTA park and ride lots on the west side of Cleveland and Kioga County. And we also did a peer comparison and a fare analysis on the system. So the demographic analysis, and I don't think there's any surprise about who's using the system, there are a number of low-income areas, low-income people in Lorraine County, a lot of people who are transit-dependent, zero car, there are actually more households who are in poverty in Lorraine County than there are households that don't have a car, which means that, you know, you have a number of people who are living in poverty but are nursing along a car in order to maintain their ability to transport themselves. We have the greatest population employment growth, however, are in Avon Lake, Avon and North Ridgeville, where the poverty population is not located. So, we have a fixed route transit system operating primarily in Lorraine and Illyria, and there's a bit of a disconnect there between where people need to get to jobs and where people who need transit are located. There is also a senior population that's aging in place and is gonna increase your demand for paratransit service going forward. The users of the service are mostly lower income, they're traveling for educational employment or shopping, or medical purposes as well. Most are compelled to use transit by low incomes, very few are riding by choice, they have a car at home, but they're using this instead. And there are several important concentrations of jobs and medical facilities and shopping that are in areas that are outside of your transit service area. Right now, I wanna go really quickly through the existing system, but basically, you have two routes operating through the Life Skills Center, and they, one, they go from Illyria to Lorraine and back and forth, each of them covering different areas. There is some transfer activity that happens at Life Skills, and each route now operates every two hours, so there's a two-hour gap between each trip on the service. The service operates from basically 5:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., so there's no evening service, there's no weekend service. There are a number of important destinations that you're not getting to, this is just a short list of some of the more important ones. Walmart comes up a couple times there, a couple different Walmarts, there's actually three that we think we'd like to be able to get to. Mercy Health in Medical Center in Lorraine, the Cleveland Clinic Facility, and everything else going on out there at Lear Nagel and around Avon Commons. The Illyria routes actually now operate as one-way loops, which means that they only operate in one direction. People who are going on one, either on their origin trip or their destination trip coming back home, they have to ride around the city in one direction to look tour before they get back to their, back to their homes. Right now, you're carrying about 120 trips per day, or about 30 per route on the system. The productivity is fairly low, about five trips per hour, about five trips per trip on each route, and the weekend, I mean, the 120-minute headway particularly is a challenge to people who are using it. Basically, you might have a two-hour trip in each direction to complete your trip to school or to work, and that would be a challenge for many people to put up with. Basically, LCT, we did a peer analysis, LCT had the smallest budget, the lowest ridership, and the highest cash fare at 410 of the peers. The fixed route service is not running frequently enough, it ends too early, and covers too little of the county to function well as a transit system, and as a result, it's only used by people who are transit-dependent. The low frequency on the fixed route service is probably driving more people to use the paratransit system than should be using it, and of course, those paratransit, those dialer ride trips are higher cost and drives up your costs on that side of the system. We also looked at, expressed some interest in looking at commuter services into Cleveland, Kioga County, so we took a look at a number of data sets of people who are traveling into Kioga County, about 50,000 people travel into Kioga County for work each day. However, only about 10,000 of those are going into downtown Cleveland, which is really the only major trip purpose that you can efficiently serve with public transit right now because of the spread-out nature of a lot of these other places where people are going. Right now, you probably are capturing close to 10% of the people who are traveling into downtown Cleveland with public transit. RTA is capturing them. Now, we went out and counted park and ride users with Lorraine plates at the Columbia Road park and ride lots in Westlake and in North Olmsted, as well as on all the Redline stations on the west side, the Redline Rapid stations. We counted about 350 users that were using that. The data from recent surveys says it's more like about 500. I don't know that that's going down, there may just be some seasonal issues or things like that, but you are capturing a pretty significant number of the people who are going into downtown Cleveland right now on the RTA services. And the question really comes, can we capture more of them by operating our own service out of Lorraine County park and rides, parking, park and ride lots located in Lorraine County? So we have some ideas together for that, and can show you what that might look like and what it would cost. There are a number of people who are working in other places in Lorraine County, around Crocker Basset, obviously, the Crocker Park area growing and is probably gonna be a larger destination for employees, also Independence and Rockside and the Cleveland Clinic University Circle areas. And right now, the park and ride services that Akron Metro and Sarda are operating, go on from downtown Cleveland into University Circle to serve those areas, and also to carry medical trips to the hospitals out there. So we have a large and growing number of middle-income Lorraine County residents working in Kioga County, only about 10% work in downtown Cleveland. Of those, about 10% are already using RTA's park and ride services. Okay, so we're getting to the preliminary recommendations, and the first area we wanna cover is the fare. Now, the fare of $4.10 for a single fixed route trip, we can't find anyplace else charging that much, it's possible, it's the highest. It's also, the 10 cents makes it a bit awkward for people to pay, so what we're recommending is that you drop that fare to $2. This would still be higher than many of the other transit agencies, RTA's at $2.50, they're gonna be going to $2.75 next summer, but they would be the highest in the region. You could potentially lose upwards of $25,000 to $35,000 in annual fare revenue. You would gain riders, obviously, by doing this, but based on what we've seen in other places, you wouldn't gain enough to make up for the loss of funds. Now, some of the other changes that we're recommending, you could gain potentially enough riders to make up for it, but just to be on the safe side, we wanted to point out that it's possible, that you could lose that amount of money on making that change. So this is just a table showing what some of the other fare products would be, basically repricing all of them based on that lower fare level. But we do think that would increase things quite a bit. We also wanna talk a little bit about dialer ride, some of the changes that we're recommending on the routes would not trigger dialer ride, additional dialer ride service, but some would. If we're expanding the area that we're covering, or if we're operating service later in the evening, that would necessarily increase the number of people using dialer ride, and we've made some estimates on how much that would cost to do that. Okay, so fixed route service changes, and these are a little bit complicated, we have three levels of service changes within the existing budget, basically, changes that you can make to the route without adding any additional funding to the service, and then some short-term and longer-term expansion plans that would increase costs pretty significantly, although, you know, not to, you know, not to the point where it's tens of millions of dollars or anything like that, but where you stand over where you are now. The ones that, our short-term budget increase would increase service frequency on the routes and lengthen the service day on some of the existing routes, and the longer-term budget would include services, new services within Lorraine County as well as the Cleveland commuter service, we'll cover in that area. Okay, so minor route refinements, we made some changes to the routes, we'll make them a little more direct, avoid some deviations from the main roads, make them run a little faster and more efficiently, and they would feel a lot faster to the customers. Connect a few destinations that we think you need to connect to, and avoid some hazardous left turns and other traffic issues. We put together some minor route refinements, and then some more major ones that you might wanna look at, that would more significantly change the routes, primarily in Illyria where we would design the routes so that they would operate in both directions, for the most part on the same streets, as opposed to making the big loop around the city. Both sets of these short-term changes can be made within the existing budget and fleet, and the fleet is something that we probably should talk about because right now, you're running all the buses sometimes, most of the time, and that's probably not the greatest thing to do, and then any changes that you, any additional service that you make is gonna put further demand on the bus fleet, which means that you're gonna need to come up with some additional vehicles, but I would say, you probably need one or two additional vehicles over where you are now, just to run what you have now, because a lot of the time, I don't think they have any in spare. They're putting them all out for paratransit service. So on Route 1, we're recommending a slight route change to avoid some unsignalized left turns and eliminate some of the route deviations. I'm not gonna get into the details of those, but there's some little things that we think would be changed, the biggest one being that we would not go off the road to go into the mental health board or job and family services. That could raise some issues where you would need crosswalk improvements, because right now, you know, there's no safe way to cross those roads, so you may need to leave those deviations in place until you can make some changes at a couple of the crosswalks, at a couple of the intersections, to give people a safe place where they can cross. So, this is the existing, and this is the future, it doesn't change very much, but we do pull out of some of those deviations that we're doing in North Ridge, and then a little bit different up in Lorraine. On Route 2, there's really no major changes, we recommend switching around the direction of the loop in downtown Lorraine to avoid some turns. There are also some locations in Lorraine where they ought to approve some traffic signals to support the buses, but that's a local issue that we could bring up to them. On Route 51, down in Illyria, in the short-term, minor changes to the routes, eliminate the segment on Foster and Lorraine Boulevard to save time and avoid some of the crossing traffic, and then operate in and out on Abbey on all trips out in Sheffield. and then operate in and out on Abbey on all trips out in Sheffield. So, that's a pretty minor change. And then, if you wanted to make a major change, we would recommend running this route in both directions on Abbey as opposed to making the loop through. The LCCC is a very important part of your existing ridership and ought to be a much bigger part of, you know, you ought to be serving a lot more students at LCCC. I understand you get a lot of calls from people who are looking for service to LCCC. So, you know, operating that route on both directions through the college would probably speed things up. We're also recommending suspending these by-request route deviations that you're doing right now as much as possible to make the routes faster and more direct. Some of these deviations add several minutes to the routes and, you know, could be detrimental to making it on time and making people feel like they're going fast. So, this is the existing route, and this is what the route would look like with the one-direction change. And the service that we're losing on the western side of Elyria is picked up by the 52. That route also operates through that area. 52, we recommend extending all the trips. Right now, the Walmart on Chestnut Ridge is served on request. And, you know, if there's, if there's one commandment in transit in a small to medium-sized system, it's "Serve Walmart." Thou shalt serve Walmart. So, you know, we want to try to get every trip on that route into Walmart. And that's a, you know, kind of difficult shopping center to serve. The Walmart's deep back inside of it. It takes a long time to get back in there. In order to make up that time, we're recommending that that route, Route 52, operate on 57 on the eastern side of town instead of operating on Abbey. We also think operating on the perimeter road, made some changes to the way that we operate that on the perimeter road in the mall as well. So, that's the existing route, Walmart by request, and this is the future with the service operating into Walmart on every trip. And then, more major change would be to convert it to one-way or two-way operation, streamline the route on West River Road to reduce deviation, speed things up. And then, the route would go into the mall only outbound in order to save really more time. But, you know, we primarily serve the western side of the city and then connect everybody to Walmart. So, that's what that one would look like. Again, all these changes can be made within the existing budget. Now, if you wanted to expand your budget incrementally, we have some changes that we're recommending here. And the primary one that we would recommend is to operate the service hourly, which basically doubles the cost because right now, you're running every two hours. So, we have this down, you know, and if this is the only improvement that you can make that involves additional funding, we would recommend that it be this, to get the routes up to that hourly level, which I think would probably boost ridership pretty significantly, getting it up to that level. And you see, there's a cost there of $620,000 that you guys have. You're not using all of your federal match, so half of that would be covered by federal money. Half of all these improvements that we're talking about would be covered by federal. So, we're looking at $310,000 in local and state funds and the rest in federal. So, that would involve operating all the routes from 5:30 to 6:30 at an hourly service. The routes would still pulse hourly at Life Skills, estimated cost $620, and it would require two more buses to operate that. Now, we looked at evening service, and we have an estimate down here of $310,000 to extend the existing routes out in the evening to operate until 10:30. And customers ask for this, you know, no matter how late you go, actually, they'll continue asking until you're running 24 hours. There may be better ways to approach this, and this may not be the best bang-for-your-buck thing to spend the money on. But we wanted to put it in here as an option. There are also some other ways to approach this that down the road you may want to look at for providing evening service without actually operating the fixed route bus service in that time period. But that'd be $310,000, $155,000 in local. So, both of these would increase the budget to, if you did both of them, $964,000. And operating the evening service also increases the paratransit, the dial-a-ride cost as well. And of course, half of that would come out of federal. Now, in the longer term, we have a number of things out here. We have them in right now in what we think, at this point, is the priority order of how you would do them. But they're all basically independent, and you could operate as many or as few of them as you wanted to operate and expend the funds to do it. All of these would require additional operating costs and additional vehicles. So, first of all, we have a number of new extended local bus routes. So, the first of these is the Avon Connector, we're calling it. This route would basically connect in Elyria to a better connection or a different connection, the Sheffield Village, and then would continue out on I-90 to serve Avon Commons and the Cleveland Clinic and all that growth that's going on around those interchanges. So, this is what that route looks like, and you can see the primary destinations that you'd be hitting with that, which apart from Sheffield Village and, of course, the mall, are locations you're not serving right now and Big Job and shopping and medical locations in the county. The annual operating cost for that, about $352,000. That includes the fixed route operation as well as some additional coverage on the dial-a-ride service. You'd be opening up a new market for the dial-a-ride as well, and it would require another bus. The second piece is the Lorraine West Route. Now, we're still toying with the exact route alignment of this, but the idea would be that it would operate out across the southern and into the western side of Lorraine, where you're not picking up now. It would catch more, it would provide more service on North Ridge as well as catch some areas of North Ridge that you're not serving now. It would take people to the Lorraine Walmart and also Mercy Health, which I think is a pretty important destination. So, this is what this route looks like. We're, you know, still thinking about whether we want to run on Oberlin Road versus out of North Ridge the way we're showing it there. But right now, we've sort of settled on this. But this catches that additional Walmart. We have three Walmarts now with all this, as well as then provide service out to Mercy Health. It also picks up that development and shopping area on Gruiswold to the west of Lorraine. That route, again, $352,000. It includes some additional paratransit connections as well as the fixed route, and it would require another bus. This is the third route that we had in here. This one's probably lower priority, but provides a third route through Elyria, goes down through the central part and picks up parts of Abbey Road that would not be covered by the two routes if we went to the two-direction service.
Excuse me, you need, we just, we're told you need to get a little closer to the mic.
Oh, closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So, this would, this is another one that would cost about $350,000 and, or rather, $310,000. This does not expand the paratransit.
Do you have the PowerPoint on the screen there?
I don't.
Oh, you don't?
No, so, I have to see it up here.
Do you want the wireless mic instead?
Um, I could, I guess, yeah, if you have one. There you go. All right, so, and this is another, this would get you up to three additional buses to, in these, to serve this. Now, we're getting into the parat, or to the commuter express service. Now, commuter express service doesn't expand the paratransit demand, but it would just expand the number of buses that you need to operate. This is commuter express service that would start in downtown Elyria at the transit hub, would serve the, a transit hub in Midway Mall area, Life Skills or another site, and then would operate to the, a park-and-ride lot developed at Springer Stadium at 611, and then would continue into downtown Cleveland. We looked at options that would basically transfer people to the RTA buses at Crocker or at Columbia Road and didn't think that that was appealing, you know, would be appealing to people as going all the way downtown. Cost of this route, $670,000. This is the, this is what the route looks like. It's Springer, but basically operates on I-90, a very limited number of stops there. $670, it would require two buses in order to operate that, as well as possible capital investment for a park-and-ride lot and amenities, as well as the buses.
You talk about two buses. What's the seating capacity of those? Are they larger than?
Well, I mean, initially, you could operate them with what you've got, which has, I think, a seating capacity of 25. Ideally, they would be some sort of 40-foot coach set up for, you know, similar to what RTA or Akron Metro operates with, you know, set up for more passengers, 100% seating. You can't have people standing on buses that are going 60 miles an hour. So, you know, that's a little bit different, you know, than what you're operating now. Over the long run, we would recommend that you start moving in the direction of, you know, slightly more expensive buses anyway, you know, for the fixed route service, diesel buses and buses that can, that can take the beating a little bit better than the cutaways. So, anyway, this service would operate North Ridgeville. We would identify, we haven't identified a site, but somewhere in the I-480 Route 10 area, just by the Cuyahoga County line, we would find a park-and-ride site and serve that. It would start at Midway Mall, go down through Elyria, serve the Transit Center, and then go out to Lorraine, Lorraine Road, Route 10. And we'd find a park-and-ride location out there and then operate three trips into Cleveland in the morning, three trips out in the afternoon. And again, $670,000. So, that's what that one looks like. And, you know, the dot in North Ridgeville where the park-and-ride is is kind of big, undetermined at this point. And then, we have a number of other recommendations. Right now, the bus stop signage is, you know, there's some places where you don't have signs, where people are waiting and stopping. There's places where you do have signs where there's no service. So, there really needs to be some work on that. At the Life Skills Hub, there's nothing there. There's no indication that there's a transit route going in there or that that occurs. So, it'd be great if we could get a shelter and a garbage can that's emptied every day in there and as well as some signage, just letting people know that the hub is back there and that they can, they can get to that. Ideally, we would be finding a hub closer to Midway Mall, someplace probably that you own. So, we'd recommend that without any specifics, and we can talk about the specifics. I know, Jim, you have some ideas on that, where that might be. So, there probably needs to be some more shelters out there at places where you do have heavier ridership. You need policies in place for bus stops and shelters, or you'll be moving them around all the time. And then, need to work with the cities to install or improve crosswalks, particularly also sidewalks and pedestrian paths. But primarily on some of those busier streets, there need to be crosswalks to allow people to cross safely. Vehicles in the future, bike racks would be very helpful. Passengers use them pretty heavily in a lot of other places. Where we've worked, registering fare boxes and automatic passenger counters would be great to get more data so that we can track what is going on and how many people are using the buses and where they're getting on and off. Transition over time to larger diesel-powered vehicles. There's now some pretty decent 30-foot vehicles that aren't the giant monsters that RTA operates, but are more heavy-duty diesel-powered and would probably lower your maintenance costs over time. And then, the longer-distance commuter routes we were talking about need to be outfitted for longer distance travel and probably more capacity as well. Organizationally, we need to have a set of performance standards in place and a mechanism for improving service over time. As the service has improved, the dial-a-ride, as the fixed route service has improved, the dial-a-ride could become more stringent to be qualified to use it. So, you could actually lower your costs on the dial-a-ride by encouraging people to use the fixed route service more. Passenger counts and passenger surveys should really be conducted regularly, at least until the APC, Automatic Passenger Counting Systems, are in place just to find out what people are thinking and how many people are using the service, where they're getting on and off. That's possible that we could find professors that would have students do this, and they've done decent work in other places where we've worked. They'll play statistics classes and things like that. Sometimes, they're looking for that. And finally, and Pam didn't pay me or encourage me to say this or anything, but we probably need another, at least one more staff member to take care of some of these things. Pam does a great job, but it's, some of these things like managing bus stop signs and managing disability certification, if that became more stringent, and implementing new technologies and things like that really needs to be done by another person, at least one more person, answering the phones, you know, taking calls from the customers and things like that. Needs to be picked up, and that cost could be as much as $75,000 to $100,000, depending on the expertise, the responsibilities, and just who you're looking for and who you get to do that. This is a summary of the costs. This is really just capital, or just operating cost, rather. You can see the short-term expansion was about $964, basically a million dollars. The longer-term expansion is about $2.4 million to do all of that, including the park-and-ride routes down to Cleveland, which is about half of that, more than half of that cost. And then, the $75,000 we have in for another administrative person, bringing the total to about $3.4 million, a little over, of which about half of that would be covered by federal funds. So, you're looking at about $1.7 million in local. Just a few other things. Student pass program with LCCC would be a game changer for transit here. You would get potentially hundreds more people if they could ride for free. In many places, these are in place, and not only the students, but the faculty and staff. And, you know, of course, Ultra IC has a lot of staff, you know, that are lower-paid that could probably, and are looking for jobs, you know, people in Elyria and Lorraine looking for jobs out there that would benefit from that. And then, crosswalks and pedestrian safety, we've talked about, but that's something that needs to happen. Just really quickly, on the evening and weekend options, we want to get the daytime service and the fixed route service working well first, but over time, you might want to look at some options other than running the service later. Some of those include contracting with taxis, contracting with Uber, with Lyft, setting up some kind of arrangement with them. We've also had some experience with nonprofit operations, basically places that provide trips for people who are getting to work or who are going to school and funded by the United Way and other nonprofit organizations. We know Lorraine County has a pretty strong history of philanthropy, taking care of things, and that's something you might want to explore, so. But that's probably after you've got the daytime service up to speed and operating well. So, if we want to schedule, we're going to be scheduling further outreach activities, public outreach, public meeting, and then finalizing the recommendations, getting any comments from you, comments from the public, anyone else that you want us to engage with, and finish those up. We've already started our final report, and we will complete that as soon as all the outreach is completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of the things you informed us about are things we're aware of. You know, it always comes down to a matter of dollars.
Documenting it is the...
Right. It's just a matter of revenues to support transit. We've not had much support, you know, county-wide in regards to the transit issue.
Yes. I mean, your, your peers in the region have multiples, you know, in some cases, many multiples of the money available from a dedicated tax source, so.
Right.
As I've said before, long before I got here, my colleagues in this board have strived numerous times to garner community support for transit. For some reason, it just doesn't happen. The number-one question that I think every elected official is asked in this county consistently is, what are you doing about jobs? Is transit not a jobs issue? You're the expert. You've used systems all around the country. Please elaborate on that.
Right. We started, you know, at the beginning of this presentation, we mentioned there's a big disconnect between where the jobs are and where the, the people who need them are in this county. You have particularly, you know, a lot of, of poverty in Illyria and Lorraine. That's the area that's primarily served by the transit system. And you have had some job growth in Illyria and Lorraine, but most of it has been, most of the job growth in the region has been in Avon, Avon Lake, Sheffield and Sheffield Lake and, and in North Ridgeville. And those areas are not served right now by the transit system. Those areas are going to be growing in the future. So, we think that that link needs to be made in order to get people with jobs and get people to educational opportunities that lead to jobs. So, that's a, you know, that's, that's been the primary thrust of the recommendations that we've made, too, is connecting people to where the jobs are and where the educational opportunities are.
Talk a little bit about, you know, people always talk about, boy, I hope my son and daughter can find a job in Lorraine County and, and stay here and work, or my granddaughter or my grandson. The millennials, they don't really want to drive. They want transit.
Right. Yeah. Their expectation is that they can, that they can use transit for at least some of their trips or, or ideally all of them. So, and, you know, providing service that, you know, providing service that's really highly convenient for people who have options, that's a stretch right now, you know, because you're really talking about getting the service frequency down again, you know, to like forty or thirty minutes at least, which would be another multiple, you know, of the, of the money you're spending now. But I think you ought to be aiming in that direction and, you know, setting up the, the systems that are needed to, to do that. But I think where you, there's considerable growth available to you just in, in providing service for the transit-dependent, for new workers, for students at, at LTRIC, and other folks that are, you know, have no other options. I think they would be using the service much more and, you know, possibly working much more and, and availing themselves of services much more if, if the transit service were available.
And then we even saw it recently, Amazon, one of the big requirements is that you had to have a viable transit system.
Right.
And we're hearing more and more that when companies are looking at communities, they, one of the first questions they ask is about transit. Are you seeing that same trend when you look at transit in other communities?
Oh, yeah. You know, this Amazon thing, you know, when the Amazon thing came out, I mean, we, we worked with the city of Cleveland on that a bit, which, you know, RTA has a decent transit system and, and has rail transit and, you know, plenty of funding to provide decent service. But we also got calls from lots of other cities. You know, we worked with Detroit, we worked with Nashville, you know, and, and talked on the phone at least with a couple of other cities about what they were going to do to get themselves into place. Because the, Amazon's expectation is Seattle. And Seattle just passed a multi-billion-dollar tax referendum to expand public transit. So, they, you know, across their whole region, like a six, six-county region. And, and that's the, the atmosphere that Amazon's coming from when they are, you know, expecting high-quality public transit. And there's just not a lot of places in the United States, including Cleveland, you know, that have transit at the level where Seattle is now, let alone where Seattle's going to be ten or fifteen years from now after they've spent out these billions of dollars on additional rail, bus rapid transit, and other types of infrastructure. So, it's a, but that is increasingly the expectation of employers, that looking at an area is that they'll have, that they'll have good transit service, that they'll be able to provide their, their employees with an urban-feeling lifestyle, you know, that involves being able to use public transit and walk to a lot of things.
So, do you, at the end of the day, do you believe the old question, if, if you build it, they will come?
Well, I think what we're talking about, at the scales that we're talking about, definitely, yeah. I mean, it's, this is not, this, what we're recommending is, is very incremental. You see, I mean, it's not, you know, at the, at the end of this program, you'd be spending under six million dollars a year. Lake County spends ten. Sarda spends fifteen. So, those are, you know, that's sort of the, the area you're in. And at the, at the level of investment that you're talking about here, you definitely will get a pretty substantial increase. I expect more than double the number of people that you're, that you're carrying now. You know, I think you really need to go to, you, you need to go to the level where you have a number of routes operating every thirty minutes before, it's really going to be very high ridership, I think. But, I mean, you'll get, you know, you're getting a hundred and twenty people, trips a day now. Not a hundred and twenty people, a hundred and twenty trips. So, it's, you know, I'm pretty confident that at the end of this program, you'd be getting over two-hundred to two-hundred and fifty anyway, and probably quite a bit more. Because the connection, you know, the, the combination of the increasing frequency, you know, the bus is coming every hour instead of every two hours, and the connections to the new locations like the Walmarts, Mercy Health, and, and Learnagle would, would be very big, a, a very big deal for the people who use transit in Lorraine County.
You just have to have that designated revenue stream to pay for it. It's not an expense, it's an investment. It's, it's about jobs, and it's more difficult for us to attract new jobs to the area because we don't have them.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, certain types of employers, you're going to have a tough time, you know, without, without having that, that connection. But I think there is a basic, you know, there are just a lot of people who are basically shut out of the employment market by, you know, or effectively shut out. I mean, it's possible that they'd be spending more time on the bus than they would at work initially, you know. So, given the way the, the system's set up, or they can't get to the jobs at all. And I think you could possibly see a, a reduction in your welfare costs as a result of, of providing more connections and getting some hundreds of additional people to, to jobs that can't get there now.
Yeah. You hear people talk that they want people off of welfare. Well, invest in transit so it can get people to work.
Yeah. I mean, it wouldn't take very many people off welfare to pay for, to pay for this, so.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's get to the meat of our investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Under the Commissioner's authorized various personnel actions and serious sheet for employees within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's always nice when we have our presentations before we get to our business. I do have a number of issues that I wish to discuss with the board. We have some pending, well, they're not pending, they're ongoing legal matters, at least two that I want to talk with the board about. Also, potential hires at 911, maybe the collection center. I'm in, I'm in receipt of a bargaining agreement with some of our law enforcement folks. I don't want to vote on it today, but I do want to talk with the board about some of the aspects of that, that agreement. We have time with that, but I do want to have that discussion. And also, potential sale of real estate. All those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So, I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we talk about those issues that I've outlined. Thank you.
Agreed. And we have the reading of the minutes of November first. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Joining prosecuting attorney in Lorraine County regarding the appointment of outside counsel pursuant to section 309.09 and 305.14 of the ORC filing of civil complaint against manufacturers and distributors of prescription opiates. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. Madam Chair, or Madam President, I'd like to ask if we could hold this until we have discussions, since it's of a legal matter and there's some legal provisions, I think that we need to discuss with our legal counsel regarding this matter before we actually have a vote. I would ask that we have a discussion about this in executive session.
Okay. Can I add to the list of issues?
Yes.
Okay. No problem.
You got to withdraw.
I withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Community development, approve additional investment to Dr. Scott Ilf of Ilf Management in the amount of five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to complete tuck pointing in areas in accordance with CDVG program year fifteen, set aside private rehab at 154 Park Avenue Amherst.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Proven additional investment to Daryl McCarty of D. Boys for LLC in the amount of four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents for the new HVAC supply, supply trunk in accordance with CDVG program year fifteen, set aside private rehab at 167 Cleveland Avenue Amherst.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Real quick, Don, how much money is left in this account? We're talking about our new downtown revitalization project.
Six thousand.
Thank you. Six thousand dollars left.
Yeah. We're, we're going to exhaust these funds.
Good.
So, we're, we're taking the last lap, right, Donny?
Yes.
That's what I was checking.
I, I don't plan on giving anything.
Back.
Back. So, we're going to, we're going to scrape the bottom of this barrel, make sure all these dollars get spent in our community. Good job, Don.
Yep.
Thank you.
I did take the roll, didn't I?
No.
Okay. Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Job and family authorized purchase service agreement norms, snow removal for snow plowing, salting services for fiscal year eighteen, amount of twenty-one thousand, effective November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen through April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, authorized directory to execute in behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, per request of form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Engineer, intern in preliminary legislation in cooperative effort with ODOT to install a roundabout at the intersection of State Route 113 at mile marker zero-three-point-seven-five and County Road 51, which is Baumhart Road. ODOT agrees to assume and bear one-hundred percent preliminary engineering, right-of-way, environmental study, and detailed design costs. Lorraine County agrees to assume one-hundred percent of the construction and engineering costs with eighty percent from OCEA and twenty percent from OPWC. Preliminary cost estimate county share of projects is two million two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for construction costs and two hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-six, no, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, twenty-six dollars for construction engineering costs.
So moved.
Second.
Seems like a strange place for a roundabout to me. Like, it's not that, doesn't seem that busy there.
Oh, yeah. You get a lot of traffic coming out of there. Yeah. I drive out that way all the time. It's, I like roundabouts.
Yeah, yeah.
And if ODOT's paying for it, let's take the money.
This is true.
Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Mr. Cortez.
You know, I was looking through something Emmy gave me here on the opioid epidemic that's going on in our country. And, you know, in Ohio, the number of pain reliever prescriptions per one-hundred people written by physicians in Ohio is ninety-six to one-hundred and forty-three. Opiates dispensed per one-hundred people population in Ohio.
We can't feel anything.
So, maybe you guys like to see some of that data. He was at a, he did a, was part of a webinar, and some of the data in there is pretty startling. We're definitely right in the core area where opiates are being hugely dispensed legally into, into the community. I know we're going to talk about this lawsuit a little bit when we go back there. We've been working on that for a while. Now, it appears that we're late to the issue, but we've been discussing it for several months. There's been a little bit of a confusion about how to, which lawsuit to get involved in. So, just as an update, whatever you guys are going to do, you're going to do today. But it hasn't been easy for us to part the reeds and see who's, who we want to be involved with. We've had multiple suitors. There's been a lot of people that have come at us from various directions, and you guys have been trying to pick the best alternative. So...
As explained, Commissioner Lundey, I read over three hundred pages of proposals Monday and Tuesday.
It's, it's, it's not, you know, so it's not that you're, you're late to the task. Actually, you were, you were quite early to the task. Some, some communities just joined on to anything that came along. And, and you've been doing a lot of due diligence over a lot of months, and we were distracted by some other problems that we had in our community that took, took a, a front seat while this was ongoing. But I don't, I don't want anybody to think that, that this has not gotten a lot of looks in Lorraine County. It has. I know the work you've done on this. And I know today's the day you need to make a decision to move forward because we're, we're hitting some, a timeframe that, that we need to, we need, we're getting challenged by. But so, please, nobody think that you have not been working on this all along. You have been. And I'll yield to counsel now. Thank you.
I want to piggyback off of something you just said about that interesting statistic. But I have six Sweet'N Low packets here. And if these were full of fentanyl instead of Sweet'N Low, this would be enough fentanyl.
You'd be rich.
It would be enough fentanyl to kill five hundred thousand people. And that's not to mention car fentanyl, which is even stronger than fentanyl. So, I mean, this is an issue that really needs to take precedence in our community because it's killing a lot of our, our children, young people, middle-aged people, every demographic of people. So, yeah. I thought, I thought that was just really crazy. If this was fentanyl, half a million people would be dead.
And I know the state's trying to do a better job of basically limiting how many pills you can actually get, you know, five or seven days, so that you're not walking away with, with thirty, and you only need to use a few. Then they end up in the medicine cabinet, and then the kids get ahold of it, or somebody gets ahold of it. And that's why it's often said that people talk about getting rid of the, the drug dealers. Well, go through your own medicine cabinet to make sure that, you know, you're not contributing in a way that you don't know about, by somebody getting in your medicine cabinet.
Jerry? I've jumped in. Go ahead.
I'm up.
You're on.
Yeah. In addition to the matters mentioned by Mr. Cortez and Mr. Lundey, which we should word as pending or imminent legal action, that's the, I do have a couple other issues of pending and imminent legal matters to discuss with the board in executive.
Lunch and dinner?
It never ends.
No, because the board wants dessert, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Commissioner's report.
Well, I had a meeting with the extension educator and the regional director of the Ohio State University last Wednesday. We had a really good discussion about 4H agriculture and how they are expanding into some of our urban areas. Had a goodwill, a good meal with some good friends at Quaker Steak that evening for Commissioner Lundey's fundraiser. It was very nice. Thursday, I had my stepping-up monthly meeting. And then in that afternoon, later in the afternoon, I had an emergency management meeting to discuss a mount, multi-county grant request. And Lisa Hobart was there, too. It's kind of cool what, we're going to go after our, for active shooters, it's a vest that has all kinds of apparatus in there to help somebody that needs, you know, attention, like they might be bleeding out, so tourniquets and bandages and blood clotting agents, so that we can save more people in that kind of event. Saturday, I attended the revealing of the mural in downtown Amherst to commemorate Lorraine County veterans who lost their lives fighting for our country. Absolutely beautiful, very, very cold. But I, I didn't want to complain because it was such a very nice reveal. And then after that, they had a dinner for the veterans at the VFW in, in Amherst. And they had about, about three hundred people that attended. So, it was very nice. And then Tuesday, yesterday, I chaired the Keep Lorraine County Beautiful meeting at the Foundry. We had lunch there. And we're working on a brochure, and we talked about our National Planning Day and America Recycles Day. That's coming up. End of my report.
Wonderful. Yeah. The Amherst dedication was wonderful. It was cold, but think of all those who served and had to sit outside through it. So...
Yep, yep.
And opportunity to sit with Councilman Janik and Councilman Deminsky and Councilman Janik's wife. Great turnout for that.
Were you at the lunch? Were you at the...
I didn't go to lunch. No, I was at the dedication.
Oh, okay.
And then the County Solid Waste Policy Committee meeting was Tuesday morning. We met to discuss three chapters of our ongoing planning moving forward that we hope to have completed by June or so to send out to the public. So, just normal cleanup stuff, all the tough stuff's coming next, so. But that's the end of my report.
Enjoyed getting an update from the OSU Extension Office. They're just doing great programming for the youth in the county, and especially through 4H, and a lot of the agriculture education programming, as Commissioner Kokoski pointed out, reaching out into the urban communities as well, too, and just doing amazing work. The Amherst mural, seeing, you know, those ten faces up on the mural, I guess they're going to add two more to the mural, but a, a beautiful program, and, and I know one of the stories was told, that one of the individuals said that he felt that he should step up and serve, and he had hoped that by him stepping up to serve, that maybe there was a, you know, a husband and father who could stay with his family and, you know, not have to serve, and that was his way of, of helping out and doing something for his country, and, but it was tough hearing all those stories from the, the Gold Star families, and you could tell it was like yesterday for them reliving that, but it just goes to show the realities of what the military families go through, and, and the ultimate sacrifice that some, somewhat paid for our freedom. Wesley United Methodist Church held their one-hundred-and-twenty-fourth anniversary dinner on Saturday night, and I took a commendation there on behalf of the board. They were very appreciative of us recognizing them for their one-hundred-and-twenty-fourth anniversary. I assured them that I might not be there for the next one-hundred-and-twenty-fourth anniversary, but, but it was a very nice event. Pastor Stanley Miller is the pastor there. The VFW Post 1079 held their Veterans Day ceremony on Sunday, and Commander Black put together a very nice program, and a lot of folks there had the opportunity to, to speak and salute our veterans, and also, the board had presented a commendation to them, recognizing Veterans Day. A meeting with Amber Fisher and, and her president of the board to discuss Murray Ridge and its future. And this afternoon, Lorraine County Community College, Wellington Center will be celebrating its ten years of educational programming there. We'll see how long executive session runs, as to whether we'll be able to make it down there for that. And then just on a personal note, I'd like to send out condolences and, and our sympathies to the family of Ray Lynn Brady, a very nice lady. A lot of folks, I think, know her through running the, the ice cream shop here in Elyria. She also ran against me twice for state representative when I was in the legislature, and we always had an agreement that we were going to stick to the issues and keep it positive.
Short lady?
So, yeah.
Smaller lady?
Yeah, sixty, she's sixty-six, sixty-six years old. But just, you know, great personality, nice lady, and, you know, even, even though we were campaigning against each other, we always kept it positive and had nice conversations, so I'd just like to recognize her. I was really just kind of shocked and caught off guard by the news. That completes my report.
On Tuesday at nine-thirty, you guys are going to vacate the viewing of State Wabash railroad streets and part of alley along north line of Superior So Division Elyria Township. Then at ten-thirty, you'll be viewing the ditch in Mapleview and Brownhelm Township, and then we will not meet next Wednesday for correspondence.
I'm moving the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Moskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning? I don't see any takers. So I'll make a motion that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Moskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Caleb.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.